This is an unedited recording of the full meeting. Public comments are held at the end of the meeting. Thank you for watching. Please smash the like button and leave a comment. It really helps the algorithm. If you haven't already, please subscribe to the channel and hit the notification bell to get all the upcoming videos from our channel. Thank you and enjoy the video.
All the meeting order, please stand. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To reply to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. An executive session was held prior, I mean not speaking, not prior, on February 12th. The discussion personnel, roll call please. Ister. Roche's. Yes. Barnhart. Martina. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? Please state your name, ma'am.
Julie Roche's. I'm just wondering if somehow I'm missing it, but was there to be a discussion about the parking meter situation?
There's no discussion at this meeting tonight, no, but I know the chief and I were going to meet, discuss, see what options we have, and figure out the best solution.
Okay. My, as part of the public, I just think it should be abandoned, and if possible, those funds should be used to hire another officer. Yes.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? All right. So as you know, Councilman Reitner, his official last day was yesterday. We, two weeks ago, prior to their council meetings, we had interviews with five different candidates throughout the city who expressed interest for full disclosure to the public. We met afterwards to discuss pros and cons to everyone, and then it took everyone to say, all right, go home, think about who you thought would be the best candidate for the position, and come back. So at this point, Councilman Ister, I'm not making a vote, just see who you believe out of the five who is a top candidate, who do you believe is the best. So right down the road, Councilman Ister, who do you believe was the best?
Wait after reviewing my notes and so forth. Mr. Savage will be my support.
Okay. Mr. Barnhart, same question?
Nate Savage.
Ms. Martina?
Nate Savage.
All right. So with that being said, I make the motion to appoint the vacant council position to Nathan Savage. Do I have a second?
Second.
Martina?
Yes.
Ister? Barnhart?
Yes.
Roche's? Yes. Mr. Savage, would you please come up and take the oath of office? Well, technically, it's not official yet. All right. Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nathan Savage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. I gotta make my talk, come here. We'll just sign here. All right. Congratulations, Mr. Savage. Moving on, police update, chief.
I'd like to proceed. Welcome. Thank you. So basically, just going to police update, the last two weeks, had equipment, kind of, I know everybody's seen the incident yesterday, it was a paper, just bringing it up, that's under investigation at this point. Many investigations are continuing. We are watching several of, we had reports of drug overdoses, which we then had reports and incidents pertaining to drug overdoses, so we're continuing to battle that ground right now. Basically, we had three overdoses in the past two weeks. So continuing to battle that with the Northern County Drug Task Force, as well as also have some outside agencies into Sunbury that are basically going to be at the police department assisting us as well with some of the drug things that are taking place on the street. So in the last two weeks, officers had a grand total of 1,097 patrol miles on the street in the last two, two weeks. I don't have a breakdown of the calls, I'm gonna do that monthly due to breaking it down into domestics and things like that, so everybody has a little more transparent with what instances we are handling and things like that. Never at any time would you be any names brought out in that, it's just an update of what kind of calls that we are handling and the sorts of investigations that everybody has and what we're working on at the police department. With that being said, we do, I wanted basically to announce the March 25th egg hunt that the SPOA along with Will's Host Company is going to be having up at the April City Complex, baseball complex, urging everybody to come out to that. We're also going to have an area set up for disabled individuals that we're gonna set up cones that we can, they can go by as well and grab eggs as well. So hoping that's gonna be a nice big event. Looking for sponsorships as well. Victoria Rosenbrandt's been working diligently on flyers and different things like that to get different sponsorships and donations for us as well. So we're looking for donations, bicycles, different prizes and things like that that we can give out at this. Looking in the near future, I spoke with the mayor about locating a pond, we know we have spoke about different, couple different locations that we're talking about. I'd like to do a first annual fishing derby for the kids, that'd kind of be neat, something we could do, whether we can do it here locally or we have to go a little bit out of town, but it's something the police department could sponsor, as well as maybe at the pond to play five, six, seven hundred trout and just having the kids have a good day. I know we spoke with some stores and they were interested in sponsoring fishing tackle and things like that for this event. So different things that the, that the guys, the girls, the police department, the men and women at the town's police department are putting together, you know, this is just my thoughts, this is as well, team effort, the police department. Victoria's have come up with some great ideas as well, basically she had brought them up to the table. Just want to give an update, we had, they had a great turnout at the Martha Street, Front Street, around late that they had down there. It was great to see the citizens basically come out, the police department on the one-on-one. Had several questions that came to us. We're gonna continue the one-on-one as a former, we'll be in different locations throughout the city, doing different things like meeting with people and just hearing what's going on in your community. So looking forward to that. As well as in the next two weeks, council, so you guys are advised, we, and I wanted to kind of make the advice here that we are gonna start the YPR. We spoke about going around hitting different streets. I know in just one, well, two streets, there was over 54 vehicles that were not registered. So with those registrations paying out, that is a $100 fine if your vehicle is on and it's up by either Coes or Sunbury Police Department, we are gonna be working together, having them commit to the vehicles and help us with that as well. We're gonna help them out as well, looking for abandoned vehicles. We have, I know, men and women down at the police department, they have been looking, the officers have been looking at numerous residents that have, you know, different cars and vehicles, we made a list, we're starting to make a list of that, but wanted to give kind of a two weeks' notice that within the next two weeks, I would say, you take it from today, go two weeks forward to the following Monday, we then will be advancing on this, going around and tackling the unregistered vehicles, insurance cancellations on vehicles as well as expired inspections. Just to let everybody know that violation is a $100 fine, that is for whether it's registration, whether it's inspection, whether there's insurance out on the vehicle. Vehicles can be towed from the streets if we elect to. There's other things that we're looking to with Coes, we're gonna sit down with Spooklet in first of the March. So just giving a heads up, I don't want anybody to be caught off guard, if I put that notice out there that we are gonna tackle that issue, so.
Code update, Mr. Rhodes.
I promise you I won't have lungs like Don. So for this month, I just wanted to be a little transparent. So we had, I'll be holding or we found 67 complaints. Out of those complaints, we issued 17 tickets, and out of 17 tickets, we issued seven citations. Our 2024 inspection campaign has started. So far to date, we inspected 135 units. Eighty-one of those units passed. Thirty-eight of those units failed, and we had 16 re-inspections. We, the code office is sponsoring a training on March 5th and 12th for Blight properties. Pretty exciting, work cited, because it's pertaining to all the new laws and stuff that are coming out with Fort Blight properties, which includes, now, we will be able to file Mr. Mayor charges against someone who does Blight property if they fall under the criteria of somebody's citations. So that's pretty exciting to learn about that. My staff, along with some city staff, is gonna be going for first aid and CPR training. And if you see my code officials, or it's code officials, excuse, not my code, it's the city's code officials, walking the streets, just stop and say hi, or ask them if you have any concerns, just ask them, we are walking the streets. Since it's been so nice out, the major streets have been covered, we're starting to work on the side streets now, so we're getting a little bit of a step on that with the nice weather. That's all I really have, and as always, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, please don't breathe, don't be afraid to reach out to me.
When is that date for the training?
I'm sorry?
When is that date for the training?
For the Blights? I'm sorry, March 5th and 12th.
Where's that?
First four conference. Yep, and it's all, it's a, I included SRI, or SRA, which is some revitalization, or whatever it is. Blight? Blight review and a Blight addition is all in Blight, it only counts for one of our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. And before moving on to old business, I just want to make sure it's on the record that Mr. Savage will be taking over, I, gee, Councilman Savage will be taking over the finance department, so. You have complaints about taxes, that's the guy you go see. So moving on, old business, Mr. Backer, AARP grant.
So for a couple meetings, we talked about the AARP grant. Just a brief overview, a lot of the projects have been street scape in nature, things of that, municipalities have gone, or eighty, I believe, ninety, eighty or ninety percent, I forget the number is. The grants have been awarded have been under $20,000. So this is due beginning of March, so I do need to know what project, if any, that you'd like to apply for.
Well, I know we had a discussion last time, and I think we're all in agreeance with, obviously, McDonald's up there, sidewalks across the street, the complex, different street scape, such as benches and, you know, garbage receptacles, and possibly different work that has to be done up at the suite with that committee up there. So is everyone okay with those three possible grant applications?
Put them on the list, I want to make a decision.
Yeah. See which ones may apply and what's actually get in there, see, get in more of the details. All right. Is everybody good with those three? All right. So I'll make the motion to apply for the AARP grant for the following suite, McDonald's sidewalks in the complex, and different street scape such as benches and garbage receptacles. Do I have a second? Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's? Yes. Savage? Sounds weird, you're in a different neighborhood. All right. Moving on, rescinding Green Light Go, vote, grant, Mr. Backer.
Quite a few meetings ago, we voted to go for a Green Light Go grant. What we wanted to go for, unfortunately, Panda has come back and said that they will only cover 25% of the cost of that, so that would be an exponential cost increase to Department of Public Works. I talked to Steve about it, he said he did not have the extra funds from, I give, Liquid Fuels, and he wants to use that for other projects, so therefore we won't have the money to go for the upgrades to the traffic signals. So I am just looking to rescind this vote, since it was officially voted, you have to rescind.
I make that motion.
Second. Savage?
I abstained. Just, yeah, because I wasn't part of the vote.
Ister?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
New business, Blight additions and leachants, Councilman Barnhart.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2024-004, add 08 North Sixth Street and 420 North Fourth Street to the Blight nuisance list.
Second.
What was that first one, Tom?
108 North Sixth Street.
Savage?
Yes.
Ister? Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's? Yes.
Motion for resolution 2024-005, 006, 007, 008, 009, 010, 011, and 012. I want to thank people to remove these from the public nuisance list. And what are their addresses?
Yeah.
630 North Seventh Street, 102, 104 South Eleventh Street, 460 Arch Street, 115 Fairmont Avenue, 1149, 1151 Market Street, 245, 247 Penn Street, 1021 Penn Street, 1038, 1041 Street, and to remove them from the public nuisance list.
Second. Ister?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's? Yes. Savage? Yes.
I'd like to make a resolution 2024-013 to update the public nuisance list pre-added. Do you want to expand on that?
Sure. Thank you. Hello, everyone. So as I, Councilman Roche's on the board here, we have a number to add on, and for you, and I just wanted to say thank you very much to all of the team that makes up the Sunbury Brilliant Property Program, because those eight are combined with, in your report, you'll see also the comprehensive report for 2023 that makes up all the activity that was completed by the council, as well as redevelopment authority, the Sunbury Planning Commission, and the Blight Prevention, right, Derek, get me right here.
We're in the property committee technically, because we haven't officially changed anything.
Right. But it's now with the mentality of prevention, and through the course of 2023, there are actually additional 17 properties removed from the public nuisance list, which absolutely shows that property owners are splitting up and working on their properties. Also, I will say the remainder on the public nuisance list that I would ask you to update tonight, I would say probably about, maybe the majority, a little bit more than the majority, have active rehab plans in place with the code office, as well as they're actively engaged in the Blight program itself. The Sunbury redevelopment authority by law has to submit a comprehensive plan or report on at least an annual basis, so that's why you have it before you tonight. And we can provide a report at any point that you want, but it is a process for success. And what I want to take span on for Councilman Roche's is that as we are updating the public nuisance list tonight, that list, I'm working with Mike and Sammy, the code office, what we would like to then renew the date of the final public nuisance that exists and update the correspondence. So if you are on the public nuisance list, expect correspondence. If you're working near a property, thank you. If you're not, let's get a plan of action in place with the code office, and hopefully we'll have more to renew than we have here. Do you want me to go any further than that? I know we just talked briefly before the meeting, but I can expand on any questions you or any council members have.
Anybody has any questions?
Is that public information, what properties they list?
Yeah, there's a list of them that are in the code office, we'll list them.
We have to update the list, obviously.
Yeah.
That's when I make a motion to update.
Everybody got any questions for Brean, anyone?
Any other questions? Well, thank you all for the team effort.
Thank you, Brean, and your team as well. Savage?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's? Yes. All right. Moving on, Blueprint Community MOU, Mr. Backer?
So we consider for the Blueprint Communities Program, we have to, we have to sign an MOU regarding to this program, so that is just for you, so we'll vote on that tonight, to move farther down the process.
Joel, I know you reviewed it, no issues?
There were.
All right. So, all right, I'll make the motion to accept the, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I forgot. And to, they sent me then, the electronic version, and it has my name on it.
That's final.
They give me permission to sign that on behalf of the city for the, when.
I'll put, I'll put it in the vote.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion to, to accept the Blueprint Community MOU, allowing Mr. Backer to be the signee. Do I have a second? Savage?
Yes.
Ister? Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Roche's?
Yes. Mr. Backer, CES Engineering Standard Agreement.
So I believe it was 2021 that we started an annual agreement with CES Engineering to do the work for the city as far as large projects go. So we're just updating that with the 2023 rates, or I should say, it says 2023 on it, just to make sure it's current, or excuse me, 2024, I forgot what year it was. So updated for this year, so I'm just looking for a vote for that 2023.
I'll make the motion for the vote of the agreement. Do I have a second?
I have a question, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Why specifically CES, or do we put them out to bid at all, or do we get other proposals, anything?
So I don't remember if in 2021 we went out to bid for it or not as a public bid, but CES Engineering, we've used for a majority of our large projects with CDVG, a lot of our street scape projects, so they've just dealt with a lot of the infrastructure within the city, so it's a continuation. But also, it allowed us to get funding by getting the required information upfront as far as cost estimates, thing of that nature, so they can provide that to us for the projects that we need to go for grant. Also, certain grants will allow you to use that as far as the agreement and minutes to forego going to the public bidding process, that way to just speed up process and honestly save on some additional funding that would come from the grants that would otherwise could be used within the project itself.
Well, you're, you're, excuse me, those are professional services?
Yes.
So they don't necessarily get bid out?
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's? Yes. Savage?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Moving on, municipal bid, so the chief and I were talking about the parking enforcement vehicle, that's Todd's, the old Crown Vic that still runs somehow. We want to sadly part ways with that, it had its day in the sun here in the city of Sunbury, but now it's becoming more of a money pit rather than being productive, so if you want to try to get that on municipal bid, you can get a couple thousand dollars for it, and Todd's been using the UTV slash, doing his round of walking, so I'd like to have the motion from council to place that on municipal bid to be sold. Are there any questions? All right. So I'll make the motion. Savage?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's? Yes. Savage? Yes. All right. Moving on, resignation of part-time police officer Terry Ketchum. So Officer Ketchum used to be a full-time officer here, he wanted to go work for the state police, but also stayed on part-time to help with grants. He's actually moving on from the state police, taking another job somewhere else, and with his new position, he won't have the time to be a part-time officer here in the city of Sunbury, so that'd be, that's the reason why he is resigning. So I make the motion to accept his resignation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Barnhart?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's? Yes. Savage? Yes. All right. Moving on, police officer recruitment slash Act 120 contract. So the chief and I and Joel, as discussed last council meeting, trying to get more pool of possible candidates for police officers here in Sunbury. For the last probably six months, we've advertised multiple times, only got a handful of people who submitted applications, and then probably one or two actually showed up to the testing date. So the pool is not there anymore, so we did try to do things outside the normal bubble to try to recruit people in. The chief and I were talking about how there's different options out there, such as paying for a candidate's Act 120 training, along with their, with a small salary while they're getting their Act 120 training. Chief, you could maybe elaborate more, how in the past, the city used to have this option, went away from it, and now we're trying to get back from it. So could you just give a little bit, like, you found a pre, another, what different municipalities are doing, tweaked it for us to work for us?
All right. So what this looks like is, there's a crisis across the country with hiring officers. So what we're looking to do here is, we're looking to open up the candidates, for candidates, and you wouldn't have to have your Act 120 certified, which is a six-month training. What would happen through the process is you would apply. Here at the police department, city hall, you follow civil service guidelines in the process, going through the process, opening it up. We have, and I know I was gonna speak with the council along with the mayor, and maybe even drop, drop in the age restriction, we have it at 21 right now, but again, that'd be up to council. But at this point, it's 21 years of age to apply at the police department. You then go through a civil service test. After the civil service test, then there will be a physical exam. From the physical exam, you would go into a background investigation, which is very lengthy, it's about a two-month process to do a background on a market. So we would do that, that background, and then pick, basically, make, get a list, once the testing comes back, you have your physical test, you would then go through an oral test. Those three test grades would be averaged, and then there would be a list of candidates posted, and we would create an eligibility list. The eligibility list in the civil service regulations, I believe it's a two-year list, basically, you can go off of two years and hire from that. By doing this, we're opening it up to a lot of people, and it gives, you know, people that might not, you know, make police officer and just can't, you know, weren't able for that six-month training, maybe you had a job, you know, they're looking, they're fast by council, we look at giving them a salary, a little salary, that's what they're saying out there, but you would get a six-month training, not just a police training, you would get signed a five-year contract, and you would be basically, if you were elected to the city, you didn't have to pay back, so the council probably didn't have to pay back, see, training, equipment, basically, you would pay back to the state, contracts would be drawn, the city's solicitor, a group from the council, and then candidate would then go to the, I believe the next class, which would be, we basically, council class compared to tuition, the city would produce a tuition bill, have the commission of the act of 120 training, that would then graduate, candidate not graduate, and that would then try to figure out how we can improve that. It's been 100% graduation, speaking with Lakewaun College, spoken with State Police Department, spoken with New York Police Department, Chino Police Department, and I believe not for also, but they had a great success rate with this, right, right now, as we but they had a great success rate with this, uh, straight right now, as, uh, we've completed, uh, this, uh, spoken about, uh, response, uh, council, uh, and this, uh, where, uh, she was there, she was in, uh, working out very well. Uh, he actually was, uh, paid, uh, paid, uh, well, but it's so close, uh, twenty-five minute travel, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll travel. So there's gonna be sacrifices, uh, but, but that basically means that the tuition, uh, usually school, you get seventy-five percent of that tuition back, uh, so you can reimburse seventy-five percent, uh, through Go Pack, uh, this, this officer's, uh, commission. So, interest, uh, so, and then also salaries, uh, upon it, which we would get thirty-five percent of, of salary. Uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, as well, uh, we're, uh, supplementing, some of that, two percent of tuition, we would, uh, twenty-five percent of tuition, and also the, uh, fifty-five percent for the, the south. So, you see how that break was, we're also, uh, on, uh, grants as well, it's, it's not a good, it's a very opportunity, you know, for, for, uh, you know, people in Sunbury and surrounding, you know, um, you know, since we have the doctors in Sunbury, weren't able to do it, you know, passing, uh, some of that, and, and there's a salary, you know, you do it, uh, but again, it just extends in backdrop, uh, the process is, the hiring process is not easy, um, it's not easy.
But if they, if they were fucked up, uh, do they, do we still get your seventy-five percent back?
No.
But they're, but they would still be obligated to reimburse because of the contract that they signed.
Correct.
And Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, um, you reviewed this, everything was good, to make sure that the city is covered under all means, correct?
Absolutely, the, the idea being that the cadet would go through the process for the civil, uh, service, thank you, and would, once they pass through that, and they're chosen for this position, let's say, um, they would sign a contract which obligates them to go to school and pass. If they don't pass, they have to pay us back for the costs. If they pass, they are then guaranteed a position with the city of Sunbury for five years. During that five years, if they quit or, uh, they're injured, it's different, but if they quit and go to somewhere else, they're gonna owe us money back. Um, and the long and the short of it is, they would be signing all that before they were.
What is the cost for the?
Academy's ranging anywhere from sixty-five hundred to eighty-five hundred, uh, so it's modest.
And even, I know the chief and I spoke, even by sending them to the academy, even with paying their salaries, zero reimbursement, the city is still ahead of the game because of, uh, the salaries and benefits that we, uh, uh, budgeted for this year, and with it going into October, like, not being able to start till October, and finishing in the new year of twenty twenty-five, we'd still be ahead of the game in twenty twenty-five also, with salaries and benefits and all those types of things, so even with zero reimbursement, where the city is still financially ahead of the game by doing about this process this way.
Something new, something that they constantly, you know, I, I believe in the program, I believe in the success, I'm talking with the, with the chief.
And it has worked in other places as well.
I spoke again, speaking with the academies as well, so, uh, the academy's a very structured, structured academy.
All right, does anyone have any questions for myself? Joel?
This is part of the, any part of the union contract?
You mean, you mean this contract itself? I mean, like, the go? I mean, Joel, I guess that has to be, does it have to be in the union contract?
To allow this?
To allow this?
No.
Does that answer your question? Does, like, the payment process have to be?
No, because they're not an officer yet. They're not an officer till they. When they become an officer.
Then, right.
And is that part?
I'm, I'm, I'm confused.
Is that part, when they're an officer, is that reimbursement gonna be included?
I'm, I'm.
The salary that you're talking about is reimbursement as, 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 as.
Yeah, Robert, I'm, not when they're an official officer, no, that's not, that's different.
You get reimbursement for your official officer?
No, 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 you're, I think we're confused, no.
No, you get, you get reimbursement, you get forty-five percent out of salary, why they're working out, so we like to pay them fifty dollars.
Right, if you don't, you just say, uh, it's a funny account.
Now, if you don't like, you basically get that forty-five percent, and then you get the seventy-five.
So, like, basically, we're saying, uh, their grant, reimbursement money is while they're at the academy, not their official salary when they start as an officer here.
And so, what they're reimbursing is gonna be for the, uh, train?
Yes, correct, I mean, that is for, what we're speaking about with this. Now, I know the chief and I, and Derek, about trying to get grant money and funds that for reimbursable for salaries of police officers in, in general.
Are we gonna pay for any, uh, reimbursement expenses?
I mean, no, I mean, because we're paying for their schooling and their tuition.
Yeah, that's not in the contract that we have, the, the only thing is going to be, they would receive a weekly salary of some sort, which is, and it, it would pay for their schooling, and as I said, as long as they make it through, they do everything, they don't. It's, it's good process, I mean, we, we do it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's kinda like, how, we brought the idea how you said that, so I'm like, hey, why not do something other people are doing? Any other questions, anyone? All right, so I guess I'll make the motion for the Act one twenty payment truck contract slash police officer server recruit. Do I have a second?
We don't have to find what we do.
Okay, I mean, Joel, Joel, I mean.
The, the long and the short of it is, these are, there's no contract to review here tonight, because everything wasn't in stone as far as what we were going to put in, as far as a salary and a couple of those small things. What you can do if you want to, is you could approve the process dependent upon a satisfactory contract, or you can simply wait till next week, or next two weeks, and, you know, table it till two weeks, and then we'll have a contract to.
I mean, I'm okay with.
I don't mind having both, but the final agreement to be put together, we should have a final there, too. No, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, what you're saying, like, we'll say, we'll start the process, but actually have a final agreement.
Yeah, you, you vote to, uh, accept the process, you then vote on the final.
Yeah. All right, so.
In the specifics.
Yes. So I'll put that in the form of motion what Joel just said. Do I have a second? Barnard?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Yes. All right, uh, moving on, police contract, uh, we have been talking about this for quite some time. Uh, we, we all sat, Joel put everything on paper, the, the police, uh, their side, they agreed upon what Joel said to them that we agreed upon, uh, so I'm just gonna hopefully put this baby to bed tonight with the police contract, so I make the motion to accept, uh, police contract. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a big question about.
Why didn't you ask me before I made the motion? Go, go ahead.
How's the overtime?
Uh, Joel, can you help me out, this, I know you met with, uh, Officer Slack.
Which one? Can it count towards the?
The agency, can a cadet count?
Yes, it, it has to, it's a Fair Labor Standards Act. I actually did a bunch of research on that and spoke with the, um, police officers through their union with their attorney, and quite honestly, under the Fair Labor Standards Act, we can't take that out for police officers. So it, it has to remain that way.
Answer a question?
All right. Uh, John Jones? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, the one thing I will say is that the chief and, Corporal Slack? We never remember what, um, and I talked, and we're discussing a policy which would negate that anyway. If that makes sense, that we can.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Savage?
I'm going to abstain only because I haven't been able to see the details on the contract.
Barnard?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, uh, exercise area, so Mr. O'Donnell, uh, we spoke a few weeks ago, um, obviously, if you don't know who he is, he's back there, a good-looking guy, he's a grand.
Wow, 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 yeah.
So, uh, he wants to present us with a, I'll call it an opportunity for the city of Sunbury here to help keep people involved, keep people active, so Mr. O'Donnell, whenever you are ready, sir.
Well, thank you, Paya Roche's, I didn't know I'd be giving a speech today, but.
And nothing like putting you on the spot, right?
Glad I can. Uh, so I'm the district attorney here, one of the good things we do, obviously prosecute crime, but we also look at ways to prevent crime. Um, so around a lot of the river walks and, you know, local cities like Harrisburg, they have like pull-up exercise machines along the river, um, so I was down in Florida before I get the Indian. So everyone knows, before, when you came to Indian, um, but down in Florida, they had a nice, they call it like a workout court down there, uh, has like pull-up bars, fit machines, it's like a big, they call it a workout court. Um, so I just cold-called the guys and wanted to see if this is something that we, we could bring to our area. Um, so it turns out they're part of this called National Fitness Campaign, so it's nationalfitnesscampaign.com. Um, they're actually expanding all over the country, in Pennsylvania, they're just getting started in here, it's more like a first come, first served, um, but essentially they would put a workout court in, something we could potentially have along the river, uh, or a La Vina's campaign, and there's nothing for kids to do, this is free, um, there's no maintenance, it's like anti-grafiti, if you guys wanna look at the website, it's at nationalfitnesscampaign.com, um, it has a picture of it and a video you can watch. Um, but they would kick in, I believe it costs like a hundred and twenty thousand, they would kick in thirty thousand. There's also PCCD grant, uh, I found, that would cover up to eighty percent of the entire cost, so that actually would put us at a hundred and ten percent, so that would cover everything, um, just through that grant, uh, and with the money they give us, and so they're looking to have a community that's on board for this. I said this would be perfect in this area, there's like an app that you can compete against other local communities, and people around the country, um, again, something that would have, would not require maintenance, you'd be able to use it for free, uh, you can location for it, you'd have a community behind it. Um, it's kind of a first come, first deal type of thing, so they see our community's excited about it, and this is something that we wanna get started here, they're gonna wanna work with us. Uh, I already talked to Nate Savage about it, and, and we had a meeting scheduled, and let them know that we don't really have any money. Um, they didn't really find that to be an impediment, they said that we can, they took this money in, helped us get the grant. Um, so this is something I'm looking at doing, and I think it would be a great prevent, a measure, a measure for crime, you know, help juveniles and adults as well, be able to have somewhere to go work out, somewhere to, you know, get outside and stay busy and, you know, essentially prevent themselves from being involved in our justice system, uh, if it comes to it. So that's kind of the, the gist of it, as I said, you know, would be, for the cost of it, they would take in thirty thousand, we would look to get the grant for the remaining amount, there's grants on PCCD right now that qualify under this. Um, so if that's something you guys are interested in, I would love to pursue, for as an idea, and I think this helps prevent crime, so we like to do, so the prosecutor like to get things out there for people to do, um, and, uh, going down the road. So, I don't think any questions about it, or any.
So Jamie's going to win his board right now?
So, that's something I think about spots, so effectively, uh, sitting around, you know, like the river, um, but, you know, it's not, you have to be there every.
You're just looking for our support, saying, hey, this is something we wanna do, if the funds are available, and so then they can approve, we need some funding, location, right?
Do you have any idea how much, how much, I guess you would need, how big of an area?
So it's less than half the size of basketball court, we need a little bit of.
You can look online, it's like, uh, the biggest is like, uh, you can get different sizes, like, you know, getting twenty by twenty or upside ninety by, all the kinds of sizes, but like, there's different sizes, so I think.
Definitely have a memorial park that I think is, uh, they have.
Yeah, so.
They're gonna see the difference between the bad and the.
Yeah, so like you said, all the kinds of, kind of, like, the funds, if we get the funds, how much are available, and when, you know, the size that fit in that.
There's a guarantee that it would be very, uh, but, uh, very available, like, a hundred percent, uh, it's actually over a hundred percent. It's a little bit of a, uh, anti-creed, uh, it's a, uh, it's, uh, and, uh, and, uh, we can, uh, we can, uh, we can, uh,
That's right, I take on that mayor. I'll take, I'll take on that mayor, forget it.
What can we look at to see what, I mean, is there anything online?
I think it was nationalfitnesscampaign.com, I don't watch that, so I don't see any money for that, so I don't repeat that or. Oh, okay, that's something you guys have to think about online, that you listen to on the site, or have another meeting, uh, set up for a tweet. I think this is, uh, that, uh, campaign, that you have some case to do, you know, for this, the board all the time, they only go out, this is something that we got, we got free, you know, it looks, it looks beautiful in itself, but it's also good, it's a contract, and, uh, probably, uh, maybe, uh, uh, sorry, sorry, going toward it, you know, the community, so we agree on that.
What do you want from us?
Just, uh, please, or, I think this, uh, is really great, it's very, uh, I'm not sure what, it's a, it's a, it's a, so that's kind of, we need a, we're not valid, but it's, it's, it's not very good.
I think, I guess more, uh, a thing, uh, is, I'm looking at a vote of the council tonight, to allow somebody, you or whoever, to move forward with obtaining the financing, or the grant, um, and allowing me to do a letter of support for mayor's, uh, that we give to you, but.
I was just saying, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
It's the same.
It is the same. So he would go, he would go for the PC, PCCD grant?
Yes. Yeah, and that's, and you probably do what you'd like to do, it's, Eric, those are grants.
It's, 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 if you have, you know, for example, say, you could do this, uh, cultural, something like that, and also they install, or they want to watch, they would, they would, uh, for us to do it, so it's something that, you know, whether, not to make it sound, I use my, uh, 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 it's like, uh, we, uh, not only the free, you know, it's a solid, uh, uh, you use it, you can, uh, for other, uh, community, you know, it's, it's good, it's good, it's good, interactive, uh, a lot of, these, uh, or like a body, uh, things like that, uh, and it's, and it's free, and, you know, maintenance, and, uh, so, uh, it's the website, it's, I'm saying again, um, it has the website, and there's videos on there, and I think it would be a nice, nice addition to the community, and, uh, proceed your best, uh.
I would make a motion, at this point, I can't make the motion, but I'm suggesting that you make a motion, that would allow the, Derek and Mike, whoever else is involved, to move forward with attempting to obtain a grant necessary and to undergo the funding necessary, the thirty thousand dollar funding, which I guess is separate from the grant, correct?
It's all from that.
Okay.
They automatically, it's like, uh, you do a nonprofit, so they automatically kick in the thirty thousand, and then, uh, spoke to them about, give me grant, or spoke to the county grant writer about it, just to make sure, I know we had one to say differently, um, but, um, that's something that, if they qualify completely under, that grant, so it's available right now, covers up the eighty percent, and with that eighty percent, with the thirty grand they're kicking in, that puts us over a hundred and ten percent, uh, so, I think more than covers.
And also, since you asked, that your motion, um, mentioned that it would be put into the minutes, because I know that's sometimes helpful for the grants, and that we would do, between us, come up with a letter of support.
All right, so I make the motion for Derek, Mike, and whoever else is involved to go for the grant, and whatever funds necessary to get the exercise area, along with a letter of support to be, and obviously, it's what we put in our minutes, we're going for this. So I make that in the form of motion, do I have a second? Barnard?
Yes.
Martina?
Yes.
Roche's?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Ister? All right, uh, thank you, Mike, and we'll get Joel to draft with that letter, we'll get that over to you.
Thank you.
No, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Uh, moving on, American Rescue Funds Allocation, uh, I know we got a grant for up at the South Tech Slot there, the intersection, that gave funds available to us, uh, now we need to make, uh, put, uh, make a vote to where we want to allocate them. I know Councilman Ister suggested we put them in St. Cecilhan Avenue and Packer Street because they are short-funded. Are they the same, they're the same one, right? Does anyone have issues putting it towards that project? Jamie, do I need to put the exact dollar amount right on this?
One hundred and three thousand, two hundred, yeah.
One hundred and three thousand and two.
The other question is, are you, we have, um, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and nine, and sixty-seven cents left in your city hall improvements, are the line items?
We're still working on it.
Just go back to Kevin and see where what happened.
Derek, we can do that. Did you get the second?
Actually, no. It came, it came to clerk's office and Jeff just asked me, happened, asked me what's this for? I just knew what it was for because I dealt with the whole project.
Alright. Other than taking that out of the general fund, eleven thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents, other than any other issues?
With the checks.
Yeah, other than that right there.
The only other thing is Derek argues. We don't get a report on it. That I'm paying for and that I'm arguing for.
You, you mean like a broke, for example, if there's fifty-three dollars spent, like what did fifty-three dollars was spent for? Or like the process in general or?
Well, the process in general, because it's part of the audit that you're questioning. And who's approving and who's not approving? So the question is, who's proving the sources?
Well, that's us as council. Who's proving these invoices? Oh, so I mean that would go back to depending whether a policy says it's over a certain amount, they need counsel, I mean, excuse me, director approval. If it's over a certain amount, they need council approval. If it's under this, they don't need approval. So are you saying how to get the death of cards that we were referring to?
Well, the question is, is, can we sort of connect those principles and show that they're appropriate?
Oh, before at the time, sorry, they're not named, but that'd be the finance department who should be looking over those things. I'm just saying that, I mean, if it involves money in the finance department should do it. I'm not saying, I'm just saying is, if it's the finance handling the money, they should be overlooking it. Not, well, saying not Lisa and DPW or John or myself or Jim, like, keep one the finance department, that's why they're in the finance department, the board of finances.
They're getting it accurate fact. I guess my point is, is that everything that goes to the finance department is accurate fact. So do cards are ever used on these cards? So before the card's abused, is there a process that they're putting in place or have in place?
There is a process in place.
There is.
Yes. Like, there should be like, like I said, I have to fill out the card, do you use it, what it's for? Like, I know the chief may time.
So who's approved them to use?
Well, is that, it's, it's the, it's the credit card policy.
It's the policy. Yeah, if it's under, just say if it's under, I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head. If it's under, what was it?
It's like five hundred and thousand.
If it's under five hundred, they don't need approval. If it's above five hundred, they need approval. So I'll say I'll talk with the chief. Everything he sends me, I say put it in emails that way. You have my verification email for anyone questioning. Or I need to sign it, and I will sign. I can't say that's being followed by everyone, but I'm just saying that's how, that's how we work. So other than that, anything else? Okay, so I make the motion to approve the vouchers for the general fund of a hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and three dollars and sixty-nine cents. Liquid fuels of two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-one cents. Private grants of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. And payroll of sixty-four thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Do I have a second?
Farmer?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Savage?
No.
Roche's?
Yes.
Ice.
Alright, moving on to back to discussion items. Uh, city of Sunbury Public Relations Officer, so, um, with dealing with so many different types of media outlets, with Francis, Delia, and here, different radio stations, TV station, whoever it may be. A lot of times, a lot of news is being deep, not, I think isn't the right word, excuse me. Being released from our employees, from directives that us council members give them. And a lot of times, our employees are the ones getting the backlash from the community. And I don't think that's right because, for example, if I give the chief a directive to, for example, this is an example. To pull everybody over who has illegal tin driving their vehicles. That's not the chief's fault. I'm giving him a directive to do that. But if the chief goes on and makes a comment, he's the one being crucified by the public, is that this is his idea. I don't think that's right that our employees are getting crucified for directives that us council members are giving them. So this is, this is just a topic of discussion. I think if any type of information is going to be released to any type of news media outlet, Francis, the radio, whatever. I think it should go through all the council men, like go through the council member of that department. So they're the ones who can ask, answer the questions to the public. Because it's not, I don't think it's right for the city employee to get the ones who are getting the criticism and the backlash when we're the ones giving them the directives. That's just my opinion. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. But I think there has to be some type of process to be followed when we're communicating with the media. So we're the ones being held responsible because we're the ones giving the directives for things to be followed, or not followed.
I hear what you're saying, and I agree, but isn't Derek the public officials?
Yeah, but sometimes, you know, Derek may not be able to know some of that information that they have at this split moment. And, you know, if it's one of those situations, he may not know, and then he says something that's not, that's accurate. But he's the ones who will be getting the crucifixion for it, not the council members, when we're the ones giving you the directive to make an announcement.
Don't take the evil person?
That is very true, but you know.
I mean, from my point of view, that's, that's part of my job. That's, that's what, I mean, that's what the job is. You, you get the bad and the good, and it's.
Yeah, I mean, I get that, but it's not, but it's not right for you. It's not right for the chief. It's not right for Mike Rhodes. It's not right for Jeff or someone in the finance department for the one. I mean, that's just my opinion. I'm not saying this to write one, but we're here to, we should be here to protect our employees from decisions that we make. Like, for example, we passed the commercial inspection. You know, Mike Rhodes is a big jerk out there, and he has to go get a commercial inspection from someone, and, you know, they're a person, not Mike Rhodes, and we're the ones who gave him the directive. I'm not saying those.
But don't we already know it through the paper? Don't you already, I mean, we're in, maybe it is one of the people up there, but maybe somebody in the audience here that's saying something that you guys are really talking about. I wouldn't necessarily believe that council members would ask.
But no, but I'm saying we, we should be the ones taking the blame, not the employees. That's what I'm saying. It's not the employees' fault because we're giving them the directive. So I'm just saying, like I said, like, we're directing Mike Rhodes to go do the commercial inspections. It's not right for Mike, for Mike Rhodes to take the criticism when we're the ones giving the directive. We should be the ones taking their criticism because we're the ones giving the directives for policies or ordinances.
But isn't that what Derek Backer's for though? Isn't that what he's supposed to do?
Well, I understand, I'm saying it's also our job to protect him as well. I'm, I'm not saying it's right, I'm just saying, I, I think it's, you know, as elected officials, we're supposed to be here protecting our employees. Not just leaving out the dry saying, you know what, might do this, but good luck from the public. That's just my opinion. Like, you don't have to make a decision here tonight, it's just my opinion. Chief?
What, what that, what that kind of looks like? Let me just, let me explain kind of what that looks like. Public information officer is, is something that I think that we need to look into. Uh, it's a discussion topic. I don't know who is a certified public information officer. There's a training that you go through for it. I did receive the training for it. I would not want to be part of that. It's part of, uh, you know, what the chief's duties and that kind of position is to give different updates to the news outlets. News outlets usually would get their information from the district magistrate's office. What I would see envisioned with that is having a public information officer, one person dedicated. Besides emergency situations within the police department that we put something out, like the incident here tonight. Or, you know, something with the threats that we've had in the past, but having a public information officer. That way, all information, if a council person was out in the street, was talking with somebody, a police officer was talking with somebody. I know my officers basically will be no comment. The only thing that comes out of that office is going to come out to me, and then I spoke with Mayor Brose. So basically, the way we do it right now is, like, the press release for yesterday came right to the mayor, let him know that it was going out to news media. But it's, it's just something that we should, you know, discussion is great discussion, I mean, it's a great discussion piece. Because, you know, if, if it's only coming from one person, and it's a public information officer. You have all your information, you slow things down. Somebody's out in the street, hey, can I get a comment on this? Can you get a comment? No comment, we're looking at it, the police department's looking at it, the Parks Department's looking at it. Give us a week, we'll get back to you. We have a couple days, something urgent, a couple days, and you can sit down with that PIO. That PIO then can release that information when, you know, sitting back, looking at the situation, thinking of totality and circumstance, and then coming forward with the answer. I mean, that's a great question.
It's like the jams are saying.
But anyway, so.
Tell me about Rick Donald, Rick.
Well, yeah.
I know Travis sometimes will get blamed for putting stuff out with us, but we're getting it, and he didn't, we're going to get it through the DJ's anyway. So it's just, it's more controllable coming through the police department. I know nobody wants to think anything bad happens, but it does.
Yes.
And, and it's the best way to do it is, I can't, I'm getting it, we're getting it through the DJ's office, or we're getting it through just calling the district attorney at any time. So it's not Travis's fault, it's, that's what I'm saying.
So.
We have PIO.
So even if, like me, I'm right now on the public relations officer, but if you guys as council want to say something, I can't stop you. Yeah, again, you know Francis, come to me, but I can't say, oh, that's it, you know, you guys, you're the elected official, so I can give information, and then you guys will get the votes on top of that. So even if you make a public relations officer, that doesn't necessarily.
Nobody helps everyone.
Stop, you know, having, I will say, one voice at that, at that moment. Yes, it would be easier to have that, and, and everybody realize that because Francis and other news outlets and maybe, I don't know individuals here directly, Harrisburg, whatever. They could see that public relations officer is Derek Backer, that's who they can go to for information. Yes, that would be, that would be great. But, I mean, it doesn't necessarily stop multiple voices because you guys have the ability to say what you want.
Yeah, like I said, it's just like a topic to see how we can make sure, like, our employees aren't the ones taking the backlash for decisions that we are making. So that's. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
That's me.
Looks like, aren't you basically our public information officer?
No. There's different forms of government in a third-class city. Our third-class city is not how it works.
He knows.
Alright, so I'll send that. Uh, Mr. Dr. ARP, PA multi-purpose.
I guess the janitor doesn't have to clean up the mess.
For us or other members of our community to go forth. I know we've talked about it in the past, I just bring it up again, they made the guy buy a little bit more street gent. Um, that, the equipment that they are referring to now is for electronic-based, so we're talking about computers and that nature. So facility has to be open to public, I don't say all time, but it's not something that can be gated and, you know, we have to go and get it in by mail. And there has to be the ability for the DCD, there has to be the ability for individuals to go into off the street and say, I need to actually do a job interview first. I can't do that at home, so there has to be a computer that has internet capability and that capability to have the Zoom virtual therapy.
Is this, I mean, will we apply for this grant for another organization like library because?
Yeah, the, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know if it was open, I didn't.
No, no, I, I think other, she made it, yeah, there's other organizations within the community that may be looking at it. And I deny any of it, if there are and they want to apply for it, I don't think we should do against them. Because at the end of the day, most likely, if you look at it, it's an optional, you're going to have to pick one.
Well, here's a question. Second example, what if, what if a library is applying, we give a letter of support for that, or what, the community, or a company?
Then if what you can't do is differentiate between organizations, so library, you have to also go across on that.
Okay.
Anyway.
Okay.
I think that.
I just said, no, another facility that was open and does the services, like.
You want to do.
Yeah, I guess.
That's the, that's the one, not the library.
No, I was, I was just, I was just the one, and not my money.
No, it makes sense.
Alright. So, I mean, by, by that being said, by not.
Yeah, it just came to my attention after, because there may be some individuals in our community that are.
Yeah, so I'd be better off maybe stay out.
Uh, that would be my.
Sound there, everybody? Alright. Uh, one thing, there was a letter sent in from Rhonda Newman. She lives down at ten twenty-nine Teller Street. The city owns a vacant lot next to her at ten one seven Teller Street. She's been reaching out to the city, trying to purchase that property next to her home.
That's one of the lists to be, to, I'm talking about this, so this is where you.
Okay. She does want me to bring us the council retention, so. Alright, awesome sauce. Alright. Uh, moving on to announcements, uh, we are accepting letters of interest for one open spot on the hard. Must be licensed contractor. We are accepting, uh, letters of interest in seven, seven open spots for the nuisance abatement board of appeals. Uh, the next council meeting will be held here at March eleventh at six fifteen. March twenty-third from nine to twelve at the Persim complex will be the Easter egg hunt. Uh, electronic recycling day will be April twentieth at the ice skating rink parking lot from ten to twelve. The Cogby Courageous for Watson Wish Foundation is, uh, at, on April twentieth at the train station. Cameron Park and Front Street Cleanups sponsored by the Chicken Lee Art JROTC Law Enforcement Club and other volunteers will be held April twenty-second to nine AM. Summer kickoff is June eighth through her front. Tattoo convention, Ink to Rink is June ninth, excuse me, seventh through the ninth. Motorcycle rally for the Rally the Rink, that is August seventeenth to eighteenth. And now, is there any?
One, real quick, before you do.
Right ahead?
Uh, e-recycling event, no TVs, correct?
E-recycling event, no TVs. Now, is there any public comment at this time? Please say your name, ma'am.
Please, pleasure. Is there still an ordinance for landlords and criminals, rent to criminals, or anything like that? Are not?
We can have.
Does, yeah, so, like, and, and I want to thank Officer Remagen for, in our good spores, taking care of the issue on race train last night. But is there some kind of ordinance where landlords can't rent to criminals, or they have to do criminal background checks, or drug background? Was there an initiative to stop that happening?
Yes, we do have an ordinance that landlords are supposed to do background checks. And, uh, we're supposed to have a list of every tenant, because they need property. There is a ordinance on the books concerning those people who have a criminal background and who is allowed to be where. However, we have received notice from various legal, how should I say, groups, that they don't like that ordinance, and it could be challenged at any time. So, we have it. How long it's been in last, I don't know.
Are we still allowed to sign up for that though, Joel?
I'm sorry.
Are we still, landlords allowed to sign up for that though?
Oh, yeah.
And who do we go to, Mike?
Yeah.
Who do we drop it off? And Mike, he would know whether or not we have ours and then.
Excuse me, Deb, what, I don't think, I think we're confused, like, what do you mean, what are you signing up for?
Like, I think landlords have to bring, or, don't you have to get their driver's license each?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are you talking about when you fill out the purpose rental?
Yeah, so what we do is we bring all our stuff there.
Yeah, she's talking about the ordinance on the books that try to prevent.
Yes.
So, yeah, as Joel said, it is on the books. Right now, we're trying to keep it until someone checks.
Yeah.
Thank, any, any else, ma'am?
No, that's it.
Alright. Any other public comment at this time? Please say your name.
Uh, before I remove the pen, um, I just want to thank, uh, Sunbury Police Department and Andre, the DEI officer, for coming out Saturday to our, uh, stand, our unity event that we had in Cameron Park. I just have a question about when it snows and the old market street, um, when they're plowing and it's, I, I think I know the answer, I just want to get clarification because some people were really upset about it, as I was. So what happens when you're plowing that snow on the corners? So let's take ad one and over here where Little Addys was. So what happens when they go through with those plows and those intersections are blocked with snow? Who's responsible, clear, clear those handicap accessible area?
I would assume they shouldn't be blocking the handicapped accessible areas.
I think she's referring to the snow, when the plow and the snow blocks the, I think that's what she's referring to.
When they're plowing, who's responsible on those corners, whether it's Addison, whether it's the bank, whether it's.
Honestly, Victoria, that may be an interesting question to find out because it's one of those things that are sidewalk to maintain, but we, we blocked it, so we may have to look deeper into our ordinance to see.
Yeah, I, I don't know. And the only reason I'm saying this is because the art shop in Hannah Alley is right there, and last week when the streets were plowed. We had several individuals wanting wheelchairs that, we get in. We had another individual who her staff had to get out with a snow scraper and use a snow scraper to scrape it, she walked with a walker. Which then ensued into a bad day because there's an intellectual disability which ensued into behaviors, which ensued into an entire day of aggravation. So I'm just asking that we, you know, whoever's responsible, and if it is, but we get into that whole public easement thing.
Yeah, well.
I don't want Steve, Steve's been asked it, so I'll check with Steve, and Mark and us will just give you a call in the next day or two, we'll figure it out.
Right, just only because the city got a little bit blasted, and I said, I, as a board member of the art, I would advocate for that because it is frustrating. I mean, we've had this discussion about the whole handicap parking, and I hope we're still working on that.
Tess and I talked a lot about that, and we just have to follow back.
Yeah, um, what was my other point? Oh, I, I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, and, and I'm a social media person, I'm doing right now. But I'm seeing, and I just had this happen to myself, and so it was a little unnerving that we do have some other news outlets that are taking stuff off of Facebook. Like, our police officers were gun drawn a couple weeks ago. There was no guns drawn. They were standing in an alley, okay? So that, like, really aggravated me because they took that off of someone's social media page, not mine, and it was news. And then I find myself on a news outlet two days ago, quoted, and they never spoke to me. So just, just letting you know, like, I'm seeing that stuff, and it's not fair to our business department. I mean, I know I'm out there and I'm doing my thing, but I try to be nice about it sometimes, but I have my moments. And I do protect my city, and I wasn't very happy about that one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Roche's. Just have a couple questions, uh, because I really don't know. So is there an emergency management plan established for the city?
There.
That would interact with?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
That's okay. That would interact with different organizations or school district or whatever?
So we're in the, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm, but we're in the process of updating that plan. There's many, right now, we're at the process of getting all the city organizations, like the police department, the code department, DPW, SMA. Getting our plans in place for when different incidences occur. And then once we get ours in place, then we want to have different lines of communication, such as out to the school district. Or, you know, if we need somewhere to put somebody up for, you know, if there's, let's say, for example, there's, we need to evacuate a building, have a place for them to go. So we are in the process of getting that plan updated. So once it is updated and different entities need to be contacted, we will contact, we'll get them on the emergency planning plans.
Paul Brown, the EMA, the director and his assistant, he, he's been laid up, and I just talked to him the other day, and he's on the mend, and as soon as he gets one memo, we're going to get together and find out.
Very cross, still part of that process.
You mean the process itself? Well, I mean, they'll probably be involved in the process.
Well, because we, because, yeah, because we, I mean, I'm a shelter nurse.
Yeah, so that, you know, those are different organizations when you reach out. Alright, sorry, I need to answer something else.
No, that's okay. Um, the reason I'm asking is, um, I, I guess you need to start somewhere. But with that instance of the supposed postal guy, um, that had issues with the school bus or something, but it was in the city of Sunbury. As a school board director, we had not even been advised for that, and I know that's not on you. But it just seems as though there needs to be a, you know, a flow.
Well, I'll just, Julie, I'll tell you, I don't know how the things are going with the school district, but I'll tell you how like the chief and I work. If there is an incident, he handles the situation first, and then informs me later. So like, for example, the incident occurred last night. He dealt with it, then he said, then he gave me an update, because obviously, dealing with the situation first is more important than giving me an update. So that's how we handle the situations, that's our relationship. Now, how the school does with their process, and who they reach out to, and who's in, I was in the know, but in the know immediately compared to the fact afterwards. That could be something that has to be addressed there. I'm just saying that's how we do it, because obviously, the emergency is essential first, and then letting everyone know afterwards is obviously second.
Okay, so I wanted to bring it here first because our Zoom board meeting is coming up, and I am going to bring that up as discussion, but I wanted to see what the interactions were with different organizations.
Yes. And that, and like, for example, I know, you know, with DPW and Steve, like, you know, snowstorm, hey, this, this is the plan, this is the plan that I am placed. I'm informing you, this is what we're doing after the fact. So like I said, normally, we designate a person to handle the situation, and then inform us once the decision, you know, whatever situation has been made, further update out.
Okay, thank you. Um, another question I have, uh, to Chief, garbage's comments about vehicles and so forth. You may be aware that there are some individuals that have the credentialing to do inspection stickers. So I don't know how you work that out, but some of these vehicles, could be rotted out from these, and there's some big times that they've been sitting there.
So anyone who will run into them down, I know, I don't know where we can do that, who will run into them to find the trucking stickers. And a lot of the officers are actually finding these before they're even trying. But they're, they're hard unless you're doing it during the day and walking right up to them. But, um, I know a couple of the officers, we've confiscated at least four from now on, just on the one street.
And, and then to her point, um, you know, there could be landlords that are the issue. And then they invite.
We're, it's, it's one of those things, the process, it's not going to get fixed overnight, it's going to take time. But as we all say, it's going to take all of us working together to get to that end game. And, you know, and it goes back, I forget who said it before in the past, but, you know, get to know your neighbors, get to know what's going on. That way, when there are incidences or when the police are doing their meeting greets, you know, these are the chances when you get the, you know, hey, this is what I'm seeing in my neighborhood. So it's going to take a team of everybody working together to get, you know, to the process like you're saying. So we have more respectful landlords and people who respect the city and respect their properties that they live.
You see some suspicious reported, you know, there's only two people that's supposed to be living in a house, and you see six or seven people going at it continuously. Hope you tell Mike.
Tell the landlord. The landlord probably doesn't know.
And I, I love those.
The landlord probably doesn't, doesn't.
No, they probably don't.
Well, we're, yeah, I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to talk about the process, but, alright, anything else, Julie?
No, but, um.
Julie, let me just comment on that with DA O'Donnell, I spoke with him the last couple of weeks here.
Now you want to say it again?
No, 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 we're not arguing, we're not arguing, guys, do it outside, go ahead.
And this is something, yeah, this is something.
Guys, stop, we're not arguing, stop, now you're both are out, stop.
I'm not saying anything, Ms. Ramera, I'm just sitting here.
Stop, we're not arguing, go, both of you are out, go. Go, Ms. Bets, go, we're not arguing, go do it outside.
I wasn't arguing, I was filming. I was catching her mouth on video, as usual.
Go catch it outside. Alright, so go ahead, Chief.
I will say, working with DA O'Donnell, uh, with, with Big Gray with him, uh, he is being very hard. I know there's, uh, three different entities that I'm working with, DA O'Donnell will bring it out, and they are not allowing.
So, sorry, Chief, can you go address that situation before it goes? I'm going to say. You're good?
There you go.
You're good?
Yeah, she's trying to tantrum.
Alright, fine, okay.
So DA O'Donnell has, has, in our three, couple meetings that we've had together, he is not like, I mean, we've gone to, uh, Davious Corpus, or we've had different, different hearings. And he's been very stern, and he's like, this is what you're going to do, and you did this, so this is how we're going to proceed through. Also with the drug task force, I know just recently some meetings and things, we've sat and talked about that. There's some things that are going to come changing with that, with policies and things like that, with going forward into the neighborhood. So he's cracking down, there's also things that we're going to implement with, uh, in, in, in doing surveillances and things, I'll put it as that. And making these cases so sound that you either do this, or you go to trial. And it's, it's, that's, that's how, that's his mentality with this, is you either, you're going to plead to this, and this is a very harsh sentence, you know, or you're going, you're, you're going, you're going to trial, you take your, 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 your office there. So, um, I just want to thank DA O'Donnell for that.
Thank you.
Okay, just one more time, like, come on, just one more time.
Just don't get anyone else proud of.
I just have that way. So, um, I hope you're, you're aware, I am going to attend the county tax assessment meeting that's coming up. Uh, the municipal meeting, uh, and different organizations, it's supposed to be on Wednesday. Miss Wednesday at one o'clock down at the administration building. And then the public meeting is to be at Thursday night.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment? Alright, I've heard a meeting.